I'll call the February 26 regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Hen, followed by the invocation by Reverend Robert Jordan Ross of the Newport Universalist Society?
Please recite this, Dean. My pledge of allegiance is through the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we believe that nothing that has been given us is in its final form, but that all things we hold in our grasp are meant for us to shape more beautifully, more truly, more justly. As we believe that deep truths have been given us to understand, to weave together, so may we know that these are the tools with which we build and increase wisdom to help us live together honorably and well. As we appreciate that senses and minds have been given us to see clearly, to measure accurately, now may we use these to turn away from what is the lesser and to establish what is the greater, that we may live in harmony with one another in the great and good city. And when finally we have done all that we might do well, let us leave our tasks with the knowledge that we have kept faith with one another and preserved our strength for the generations of those who follow us and set a light of reason and of service for all our fellow cities to see. So may we be blessed with such gifts. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. See, I got the out of order a little bit here. We have the roll call, please.
The record will show that all members are present.
Okay. Close session report. City Attorney.
There's nothing to report?
Okay. The next item on our agenda is presentations, and we have a presentation this evening to the Mayor and the City Council of the Mayor's Cup by the AYSO, and I think Jeff Braun is going to be presenting that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Jeff Braun, and I'm proud to be accompanied today by my son Chase and my daughter Lauren. I am the Commissioner of AYSO Region 97. We have the distinct honor of having 1,800 children participate in our region of AYSO. Thousand of those 1,800 children come from the city of Newport Beach. The balance come from the city of Costa Mesa. This year, the Region 97, AYSO, Region 57, which is Corona del Mar, and Region 120, which is based out of Costa Mesa, decided to have the first annual Mayor's Cup. And what we did was, we took all of our age groups from the ages of 10 on up and took the first and second place teams from each city and had them compete in a tournament which took place in the two different cities. We were proud to have then Mayor Rozansky attend the tournament and honor our victors with medals and the trophy. At the same time, former Mayor Mansour was also there along with Councilwoman Foley. And we're proud to announce that Region 97 was the first annual winner of the Mayor's Cup. And by virtue of winning the Mayor's Cup, because we had the most teams win in the age division, we were presented this trophy, and we had Mayor Rozansky at that time and Mayor Mansour arm wrestle to see which city would be in receipt of the cup before the other.
And you see where it is.
That's right. So, the purpose of the tournament, first and foremost, was to make sure that soccer was on the radar of both cities, and that so they knew the plight that we're faced in terms of trying to find fields for our children to play. And we applaud the city of Newport Beach for doing everything in its effort, currently with Sunset Ridge, and we thank you very much. And without further ado, I'd like to present the first annual Mayor's Cup trophy to the city of Newport Beach. Sean Levin told me that it'll probably just sit in his office, and I hope it's a fine spot on his desk if that's where it chooses to sit. And again, we thank you very much for the time and for accepting this for this year.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead, Steve. Go ahead. You'll see which mayor is better next year.
Sounds like my brother.
He gets to wrestle for it next year.
There you go. Missed noise.
I'll go ahead, Steve. Go ahead. You'll be so proud.
Okay. On the count of three. One, two, three, smile. Let me do just one more.
No flag.
Sorry. I got it. There we go. One, two, three, smile. All right, guys, thank you.
I tell you, Sean isn't going to get that trophy. I can tell you that right now.
Soccer's just really a wonderful sport. Both my daughters played for many years, and I actually coached for a while. So, it's a lot of fun. Y'all did it.
Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay. Councilmember Gardner?
We've gotten a couple of things, a couple of letters on Lido Village, and I didn't know whether, Mike, whether you had planned something, whether a study session might be valuable, or whether the General Plan Implementation Committee feels like it's already handling those issues.
What was the substance of the letters?
It was underperforming, the parking was terrible, the boat slips were wrong, and just the fact that they felt, the reason I was bringing it up because the gist was that the city had mismanaged things, not necessarily just the landlord.
Well, it's very clear, you know, the city really hasn't mismanaged anything here. This is a property that's changed hands several times, and the most recent owners now are actually actively pursuing a redevelopment plan for the property. And so, I have actually directly encouraged them to do a better job of maintaining that property in the interim. I have to tell you, I haven't seen much movement in that respect, but I will be talking with them again this coming week on that point. And in the meantime, I'm hopeful that their proposals can move forward rather quickly here for consideration.
Councilman Curry?
Just briefly, I want to commend General Services and Public Works. I used to make a joke that, you know, you need a puddle fixed. It's a trick question. There are no puddles in Newport Beach. We actually had some after the recent rain, and I want to commend our staff for being out there and having them fix the morning that they were called in. Congratulations, guys. Thanks.
Councilmember Webb?
I can't remember exactly what the time is. Maybe you can help me out. But on March 1st, we're going to be dedicating the new baseball facilities and improvements at Mariners Park at 11 o'clock. I am intimately familiar with the appearance of the park, and it probably looks better today than it has in many years, if not forever, because they've done a really good job of remodeling it, and I think that everybody that uses the park will be happy to take advantage of the new improvements. So, please come on 11 o'clock to look at the Little League tossing the first ball out on the new field.
Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protim Dagan?
None.
I have two things. First, on Monday morning, I had the pleasure with the city manager of hosting a group of business men and women from Chile who were here as guests of the Rotary Club to learn about business and government in Southern California. And we had a session in the council chambers here where we talked about how our local government operates, and they told us a little bit how theirs operates, and it was an enriching experience to be able to talk to people from another country and hear their experiences and give them some idea of how we operate here. And these folks are being hosted by families in Newport Beach, and it was a very enlightening experience. The second thing is that last night I had the pleasure to attend the annual dinner of a group called Focus. This is an organization that I had not been aware of previously. It's Friends of the Orange Coast Interfaith Shelter, and it's been in existence for 20 years, and they help homeless families in the Orange Coast area. And they had their annual dinner at the Five Crowns Restaurant, and I presented a letter of commendation to Dennis Amargo Brask and the Five Crowns Restaurants, the Lowry Food Chain, I guess, for their work and help with the Focus Group and providing the annual dinners and working with this group for over the last 20 years. And I actually found out today that the owners of the Lowry's Restaurant chain live in Corona del Mar. Didn't realize that. Anyway, it was really, it was really an inspiring event to see this group that's been around for 20 years and all the help that they give people that are in need in our Orange Coast area. So, it was a very rewarding experience. Madam Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 25, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay. Councilman Hen?
I have no items to pull, but with regard to item number eight, following the study session this morning and this afternoon, Homer confirmed that the results of the phased analysis in that item will be made available as and when the phases are done. So, we won't have to wait to get results from each phase until the report is fully finished.
Councilman Rozansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protim Dagan?
Yes, I wanted to continue item number 12, and I did speak with staff at the break, and they indicated that they would still be able to meet all the funding guidelines and deadlines and still accommodate peer review of our transportation plan. So, I'd like to continue it unless someone, of course, wanted to pull it.
Is that to a date certain, or?
I believe 30 days. Is that what we had discussed?
Is that? Okay, listen.
March 25th?
March 25th.
March 25th.
Does that work for you, Steve? Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
Nothing.
Councilman Webb?
Item 22, please.
Okay, I have none. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number 20, which is titled Excess General Liability and Pollution Liability Insurance Renewals. Staff recommendation reads, approve the renewal of the excess general liability insurance coverage for a one-year policy of 500, 300, excuse me, $500,330 in premium and $206,594 in premium for pollution liability for a three-year policy. Today, we received, and it was mentioned at the study session, a last-minute quote for a third layer of excess general liability insurance. Therefore, we'd like to amend the original staff recommendation to include this third layer of excess coverage for $113,281. Note, with this additional layer of coverage, the city will receive approximately $300,000 in premium savings over last year's renewal. So, the city clerk has this wording.
I would just add one item. That's for an additional $25 million of coverage in that third layer.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Good evening, Honorable Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Item number eight, I'm Dolores Oding. Thank you.
Item eight. Anyone else wish to pull an item? Please step forward.
Item nine, my just question is, is does this, well, I'd like a little discussion of it on the street work that you're looking at. Item 12, I guess that's pulled, and so I'll just, that's already postponed, is it not?
It's been continued, Dick.
Okay, that's fine. And then, just a suggestion on item 18, it isn't something I wanted to particularly pull, but I think it deserves to have citizen input on this as well. Thank you.
Okay, so you don't want to pull item 18, but you do want to pull item nine?
I do want to pull item nine.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, I'd like one other. Could you just make an explanation on item 23 of what your change is that you're talking on your meeting order, I believe?
Okay, item 23. Motion there?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve items 1 to 25. We'll be pulling items 8, 9, 22, 23, continuing item 12 to March 25th, and then recording the comments of the city manager on item 20, which is amending our insurance coverage.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. First item is item number eight, approval of professional services agreement with Red Oak Consulting for Water Rate Study.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Dolores Oding. I live in Newport Beach. This is not an easy agenda item to understand. So, we, our Metropolitan Water District is going to be increasing what we spend for water, and so I guess we have to raise the rate, and that would be what's called a pass-through rate. And I'm not clear on all of this, so if I make any misstatements, I, I'm sorry, because I spent time reading this. So, anyway, what we are going to be going out to do, and just so that everyone in the community knows, we're now going to be in the process of implementing, well, we have implemented, we haven't used yet, but we are going to be doing what's called Toilet-to-Tap, which is they take the effluents from the community and they recycle it. And a couple of Fridays ago, I got the opportunity to attend, you know, Waco when they have monthly meetings, and they have them at the Sand District back down over in, over in wherever it is, I can't think. Thank you, Fountain Valley. They'll also be having a public hearing for rate increases. So, anyway, when I left the meeting, the smell of the chemicals used was enough to singe your nose. You couldn't breathe. So, I invite all of you and anyone in the community to go down there some morning and just check it out. Anyway, so, we went to Toilet-to-Tap in this community without a vote. San Diego was going to do Toilet-to-Tap, but they voted, and the people said no. LA was going to do Toilet-to-Tap, and they voted, and the people said no. We got to have it, okay? And so, now we have it. So, Toilet-to-Tap, to me, is the ultimate sacrifice in water conservation. Basically, it's your toilet water, and it is recycled and made drinkable. So, now, and then on top of that, we also got fluoride added to our water recently. Now, we won't have the impact of fluoride until probably March or April, when we start to buy the metropolitan water. And so, we've now learned through the process that fluoride isn't good for children, that fluoride passes through, that it passes in the, you know, like in pregnant women, it passes into the fetus and goes into the blood-brain barrier. So, one day, they'll finally have the guts to come out and say that fluoride isn't good for pregnant women either. And we found out through Dartmouth and the state of New Hampshire that there is normal absorption, so when you put your child in a pool for hours and hours and hours, it does go through the skin. So, one of the things that we as caring parents and family can do is, of course, get a reverse osmosis system for our sink or distillation. And reverse osmosis basically will work for the kitchen, and that will be so that you can cook your food or wash your food without fluoridated water. What I'm getting to is this, is this report, item number eight. And basically, the scope of work talks about three different things, which is a 10-year financial plan, a cost of service analysis, an evaluation and design of proposed rate structures. What I gave to you is because some members on the council thought that this study did not, you know, that it wasn't, that it did not come under, you know, Proposition 218, and this is, you know, like a Supreme Court case in California on 2006, and it's, it was the ruling of Big Horn Desert View Water Agency versus Behringson. And it gives you a nice little history of Proposition 218 from today to then. So, anyway, so, anyway, that gives us the right to vote on any rate increases. But the right to vote is called a protest vote, and I'll talk about that another time because I want to get into this document a little bit, and I know I'm running out of time. So, we have a 10-year financial plan, which is to perform a financial analysis to include the examination of projected imported water supply pass-through rate increases, which was what I hope that we stick with. Possible future reductions of water capital improvements, revenue analysis, revenue requirements, bond compliance analysis, and reserve compliance. Item number two, from what I can understand, is where they're going to, and three, is where they're going to do what's called, based on customer class evaluations. It's a very socialistic term, but what I guess is going to happen is they're going to be determining how much water we should use, and then if we use more water in a tiered water system rate, we will then get to be taxed on the extra water that we use. Now, this is, of course, so that we don't have people watering their grass too much or they don't water their driveway too much. I have asked for several times any information that the city has done lately or today. We should also include that in this study of what the city is doing to conserve water. Because before you ask us to conserve any more water, when we have already done the ultimate sacrifice, which is toilet-to-tap, I think we need to know a lot more parameters. And I'm sorry that I ran out of time because it's an important item, and tiered water rates are basically, they're basically a tax. And now that we might be doing reverse osmosis in some homes, we'll be using more water. And the downside, and what they were concerned about is the finance committee meeting, is God forbid we all really do conserve and go to tiered water rates, then we would lose revenue for the water department. So, there's a downside to this. And anyway, thank you for the extra time, Mr. Mayor.
This is just a study. We're not voting on anything except the study.
But in this city, many times, studies are just the first phase of the project. So, that's why people in the public need to know. Thank you.
And because all this reclaimed water gets put in the ground before it ever gets to it, we like to call it showers to flowers instead.
Does the staff care to comment on this thing of water rates being subject to Prop 218?
I'll do that. As you'll notice, the water rate study is going to consider Prop 218, and depending upon the proposal that the council ultimately adopts, it's very likely and very, it's potential that 218 will apply. It's just, at this point in time, we don't know. But the Big Horn case did identify situations where there were increase in water rates, and it did subject it to a protest process. Dolores can tell the council how that works, or I can do it when the time's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll take you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, bring it back to council.
Move the item.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item that was pulled was the item number nine, the Corona del Mar Street Rehabilitation, Approval of Professional Services Agreement with Coast Surveying Incorporated. Mr. Nichols?
I need to read a half a sentence for Dolores here. Additionally, this analysis must be completed to meet the requirements of Proposition 218 as recently discussed.
Dick, you pulled item number nine.
I'm done there. Number nine, it appears that everything from Coast Highway to Bayside, from Alvocato to the corner of the triangle up there at Marguerite, is going to have a pretty sophisticated survey done for heights and where all the water mains are going and virtually everything there. And I didn't notice that we had any problems with streets as far as breaking up or anything, and I, and I, so I just wondered, is this being done for some other reason? And, and just a question there. I do think it has merit in that going on with this number 12, I would like to see that Iris and Coast Highway traffic light that we're talking about getting people across. We at one time talked about that being a traffic light for traffic, and it, and I would suggest that at one of the other locations, either at Jasmine, Jasmine being one other location, might be a better one. The car traffic getting in and out of those, that street is much better than Iris. And that's particularly, but if anyone has an answer to the question of why such a complete survey is being done, and is there something wrong in the city there, because it's a pretty quiet neighborhood that I haven't seen any problems with.
Thank you, Dick. Steve, you want to comment on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah.
Additionally, this analysis must be completed to meet the requirements of Proposition 218 as recently discussed.
Dick, you pulled item number nine.
I'm done there. Number nine, it appears that everything from Coast Highway to Bayside, from Alvocato to the corner of the Triangle up there at Marguerite, is going to have a pretty sophisticated survey done for heights and where all the water mains are going, and virtually everything there. And I didn't notice that we had any problems with streets as far as breaking up or anything. And I, and I, so I just wondered, is this being done for some other reason? And just a question there. I do think it has merit in that going on with this number 12, I would like to see that Iris and Coast Highway traffic light that we're talking about getting people across. We at one time talked about that being a traffic light for traffic, and it, and I would suggest that one of the other locations, either at Jasmine, Jasmine being one other location, might be a better one. The car traffic getting in and out of those, that street is much better than Iris. And that's particularly, but if anyone has an answer to the question of why such a complete survey is being done, and is there something wrong in the city there, because it's a pretty quiet neighborhood that I haven't seen any problems with.
Thank you, Dick. Steve, you want to comment on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Mr. Nichols, we'd be happy to sit down with him and kind of show him more about the project. But the purpose of this project is solely for rehabilitation of the streets, and we feel that a lot of these streets do need, are in need of a lot of work. And the survey is required in order for us to do it properly and make sure that drainage is accommodated. So, we'd be happy to sit down with him and discuss it further if he has some questions.
Okay, thank you.
Also, clarification. It is at Iris, it will be a pedestrian-operated signal, not a car-operated signal, so it will not be, and it'll be synchronized with the other signals.
Correct. Councilman Webb?
I move the action.
Now, does anyone else want to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is item 22, which is the McFadden Square Centennial Legacy Project: Approval of Historical Timeline. Councilman Webb?
Right, this is a part of the McFadden Square Legacy Project, and it's one where we are creating an artistic monument to the city's centennial. And as a part of that, there's a sculpture in the center, but there are going to be granite stones which are engraved with messages that will radiate out from this center sphere to the outer edges in an elaborate fashion, which will give you a timeline for the city of Newport Beach, from, starting from when Samuel Donalds came into the bay in, I believe, 1870, going up to 2006, which is a celebration of our centennial. And we were trying to come up with around 100 different little events that could be mentioned in this labyrinth. I know that as you go through it, there are going to be some that everybody will say, well, gee, why are you considering that one? And, oh, yeah, this other one, that's great, let's talk about that. So, I think that if you asked 10 people, if they agreed with everything on here, you would say, you wouldn't get any of them that would say that. However, I think that we've tried to work out a good variety that tries to recognize many of the events that have occurred over the last 100 years, 100 really, in about 20 years. In doing so, we've come up with a list, which you will see, and it was pointed out to me rather recently, that there were perhaps two additions that should be made, and then I noticed there was one other wording change I'd like to see. And so, I've indicated, I handed out to you the three changes which I would recommend. The first change is, in 1913, is to add the first Balboa Theater opens, in that this is something that I think that as we go through with the completion of the Balboa Theater, that it will be nice to recognize that. The Balboa Theater, first one opened in 1913, and then the present location for the Balboa Theater was opened in 1928 as the Ritz Theater, but that doesn't need to be on the wording. The other two are in 2004. I've been asked to make sure that we add in and mention the Coron del Mar's 100th anniversary. And then, in 2006, I'd like to change the wording to say Newport Beach celebrates its centennial, rather than its 100th year. So, those are the three changes I would recommend that you make on, or that we make on the timeline. As we get into the construction, then these will be all added as a part of the construction.
Is there a motion?
I, so move.
You know, actually, there was something else I thought of. Well, no, not about that. What about adding in the timeline here the creation of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce in 1907, I believe it was?
Well, that was called the Harbor Boosters back then, not the Chamber of Commerce. And the Harbor Boosters ended up, I guess, merging into the Chamber of Commerce. I think all of, well...
That's kind of like the Ritz Theater, I think we can probably...
We were trying to limit this to 100, so that we may need to start taking some out if we add in too many more.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion from the council? Kerwin?
I have nothing to say. I'm Kerwin Rockefeller. I'm chairman of the Newport Beach Arts Commission. I live in Newport Beach, and have been part of the McFadden Square Legacy Project for three years now.
By the way, we still are soliciting contributions for this project, because we would like to raise still another $100,000 in order to see if we can fully pay for this through donations.
Forgot to put the...
Any questions, Mr. Rockefeller? Thank you, Kerwin.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on item number 22? Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a vote.
The vote includes the chamber, the motion did, or not?
If the city council wants to, I, we could, would we want to call it the Harbor Boosters? Do we want to call it the Chamber, since the Chamber, I don't think officially took that name on until 15 or 20 years later?
They are going to be celebrating their 100th anniversary next year, though.
That's the Christmas parade.
The Chamber was last year.
They celebrated it last year.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, okay.
I'm okay calling it the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I'd call it the Chamber of Commerce.
Historical license there?
Well, we'll take and come up with some good wording for it.
Okay, so the motion does include the Chamber of Commerce appropriately worded.
In 1907.
Appropriately worded, right. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 23 was not pulled from the agenda, but council, or ex-councilman Nichols asked for an explanation of that, so if we could give them that, please. Did you pull 23?
No.
Yeah, 23, was it pulled? Okay, it was pulled.
It was pulled.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, what item number 23 would do would be to change the order of the council agenda based upon a request from Councilwoman Gardner. The council reports and committee reports would be placed at a different location within the agenda, and it would come immediately after the disposition of items removed from the consent calendar. So, it would move it up earlier in the meeting so that those presentations could be made by council regarding committees' reports.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Curry?
In looking at this item, it seems to me that sometimes the committee reports are versus the council announcements are sometimes a distinction without a difference. Would it make sense to simply combine this item as one item so that council people can report items of interest that they want on the agenda, and at the same time, report committee reports, so that we can speak sort of one time, perhaps more at length than we do, but only one time, rather than having to come back and have the same things talked about? I mean, my thought is that that would produce perhaps more brevity in terms of the meeting, and be more efficient.
I do see, I see a distinction, though, because I think that many times, the announcements, we all listen for the event that's happening in the boat, the Balboa Island Parade, or the Coron del Mar Walk, as opposed to what could be a bit technical, but my, as far as a committee report. So, I do see a distinction there.
Any other comments on that? Okay, does anyone on the public want to speak on item 23? Okay, seeing no one, bring it back to council.
Ramon, I would move this, please.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the consent calendar. Next section of our agenda is public hearings. The first item is number 26, the Award of Non-Exclusive Solid Weight Collection Franchise to Green Environmental Waste and Recycling LLC.
I'm Andrea Riles from the General Services Department. And just a quick background, Green Environmental Waste and Recycling had to do an application, fill out a franchise form, and submit all the insurance requirements that the city requires, and they have met all those requirements. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, staff?
Move the action.
Okay, anybody from the public want to speak on this item? Okay, there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, anyone in public comments, please step forward.
Good evening, mayor council members. Denise Obermann, on behalf of the concerned citizens of Newport Beach, I'm here to make certain that the public has visibility relative to some decisions that have been made concerning the ordinances to regulate residential care-related group home uses. As most people know, over the past year, at the bequest of city council members, and with the promise of both a strong renewed ethical compass and reimbursement, citizens spent over $200,000 of their own money to help the city develop a planning-based and reasonable equitable solution to manage these uses. The council has chosen to ignore the recommendations and to enact an ordinance that we believe to be deficient relative to both planning and enforcement standards. Unfortunately, we felt compelled and really driven to file a formal complaint against both the rehab business operators and the city in efforts to obtain an equitable relief and some reasonable level of monetary compensation. The complaint was filed in state court, and to make it a cost-efficient process and a transparent one, it was filed concurrent with a request for discovery in order to rapidly surface facts and truth under oath concerning the nature of these businesses, their operations in our neighborhoods, and their interface with the city. In direct contradiction to both the interest of the citizens and the city as an entity as itself, we understand that the city has chosen to move this matter from state to federal court jurisdiction. This is a major problem, and we feel represents a breach of judgment for the following reasons. Firstly, federal court inherently increases the cost of a lawsuit due to procedural requirements, requirements which offer no benefit to resolving the issues in hand from a substantive perspective or a procedural one. Number two, by removing the action to federal court, the city has, in fact, given the rehab business operators potentially months of additional time to respond to discovery. In state court, for those in the council and the public who are not aware of this, the discovery would have been obtained within 30 days, and therefore, there would have been facts and these truths set forth under oath so that there could be hopes of expediting a mutually acceptable and equitable solution to the issue. What the city has done in moving this to federal court in addition to increasing the cost to the city and its taxpayers, provided the rehab businesses with the opportunity to play hide the ball, right when there was an opportunity to drive a much-needed transparency and potentially a rapid and reasonable solution. If the city really wanted to be on the constituent's side, and also to secure a legally and politically compelling position, it would have stepped up, stepped up to reimburse the citizens, as members of council had promised, for their fees, to listen to the specific objectives and plans the citizens want, and really subsidized and facilitated an equitable consent-type agreement where it would be needed.
Denise, can you wrap it up?
Yes, I'll be done in a minute. Thank you, Ed. Mr. Mayor? We find, we also find it curious that the city has not sided with its citizens or actively solicited support from other cities, and maybe, in fact, the league of cities, by way of getting intervenors, particularly on the issue of integral use, because it would be potentially, and we are confident it would have been resounding substantial support for the position that was advocated by the citizens. So, in closing, we feel that this approach is financially a responsible one and unsound from a perspective of public policy. We're both saddened and angered by this, and unfortunately, this indicates that in addition to going to the courts, we're going to have to seek a fair solution through the court of public opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? A second. City Attorney, is there any need, or is it appropriate to respond to those comments?
No.
Okay. Councilman Rosansky?
Actually, I do have a question, City Attorney. Have we been served with that lawsuit that she's referring to?
No, we did not, we're not served with a lawsuit.
Do you know if any of the operators that are named in that lawsuit have been served? Are you aware of any?
I don't know.
So, very good, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
That is not correct. Excuse me, sir. The city took the position in the motion that it had effectively been served, and it claimed that it was not aware of any other service. But just to clarify for the record, service has been made to the operators, and the position that the city took was a position that would be driven by service and not lack thereof.
She's correct. With the question was, were we served? No, we were not served by the citizens. But we did, when we filed the motion to have it removed to federal court, acknowledge service as part of that motion.
So, would any discovery have applied if we weren't served with a lawsuit up until the time we actually intervened on our own to take it to federal court?
I don't, there, I don't remember the exact details for when discovery can begin in state court, but it does, it would require some service for us to be...
I mean, how can you have discovery without service of a lawsuit?
Exactly. And there would have been...
So, the claim that we were holding up discovery, how can we hold up discovery if they hadn't even served us with a lawsuit?
With regards to the city, that might be true. I don't know how that would have been announced with their...
Well, I can only, we can only answer for ourselves, not for the operators, obviously.
Correct.
Thank you.
No, I, this is one of my pet peeves, God knows how many years, I can't even remember, I'm getting so old coming up here. Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. And it is the whole idea of closed session, because as you know by now that I actually do my homework on items, and, and believe me, I have spent hours looking at other cities and other city closed sessions and other city report outs of closed sessions throughout the state of California, okay? And then, I actually spent, me and another woman, I don't know, I think we went through three years, four years of going into closed session every time we have a single council meeting, and coming out, and there's never anything to report out of closed session. Now, one would believe that, and now I'm hearing that you, that they, that you didn't get served, but you honestly had the document in hand so that you could bring it to federal court and admit that you got served. So, it's kind of like this weird, I mean, that, and then the bottom line is, is that no one even know, no one even knew that you took it to federal court. If Denise hadn't come down again tonight to tell the public what happened, nobody would have known. Now, do you mean to tell me, and I guess this must, what happened? You go into closed session, and I, believe me, I'm not trying to, I think the world of you, but this is like, what's crazy, is that you go into closed session, you don't vote to say, yeah, let's go to federal court? Do you wink your eyes twice? I mean, how does Robin know, how does, you know, like Attorney Clausen know how to proceed? Or she just tells you, this is what we're going to do, and she's the attorney, so you sit there, but you don't nod? There's no acknowledgement of anything? We got the brewing company. Has the brewery, has the Newport Beach Brewing Company sued us? It's on the agenda. You actually went back into closed session at another council meeting late at night because of this item. Nobody knows what's going on. So, and I know, and you probably came out afterwards, but, you know, there's an issue of, people kind of think that you do a lot of stuff behind closed doors. Whether or not that's true, it's an appearance that is occurring within this community of a lack of transparency. We have approximately close to half a dozen lawsuits going on. That is public money being spent. And the reason why we do the business of the public in public is because it's our money. It's not your private businesses. And the more you tell us, the better off it will be, because we will understand. I mean, I don't know, five lawsuits, that has to be around a million dollars by the end of the year, if all goes well or not well. I'm sure Attorney Clausen needs to get, you know, like, a budget increase. I'm sure there are actually going to be more litigation. But we never know when it starts, when it ends, and what happens. And there are actually cities that actually come out and tell you what happened and who voted for it. And I thank you so much for your time and for all your work, but this is just something that gets under the skin every now and then. Thank you.
Robin, do you want to explain what we're required to report? Robin, do you want to explain what we're required to report out of closed session and why and how we do it?
Well, the issue that Dolores and other people seem to miss is that the reason why the Brown Act allows closed session discussions for litigation matters is so that the council has the ability to discuss litigation issues, legal issues, strategies, and they are not required to report out those strategies or the decisions by which those decisions are made, and the reasons for them, or how a council intends to defend itself when it's been faced with a lawsuit claiming $250 million by its citizens.
Isn't that also to protect our attorney-client privilege?
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay. Dolores, now, now, come on, you've had your time.
You missed the point. The point isn't putting you in jeopardy, the point is reporting out that you voted or did something.
The type of decisions that are made, we report out when they're required by the Brown Act.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll have the next item on the agenda, which is oral reports from the city council on committee activities. Councilmember Gardner?
I'm the city's representative on the Newport Bay Watershed Executive Committee, and this is made up of the county, several cities, the IRWD, and the Irvine Company, all of whom are considered stakeholders, and we meet quarterly to discuss the issues affecting the bay. One of the main issues that we're addressing right now is the dredging of the Upper Bay, and we've been very concerned because we have been promised funds, you know, we've been, the Army Corps of Engineers has asked for funds, they've been allocated, but they never make it to the final budget. And we have been concerned that we are going to run out of money before we finish the dredging, and by pulling the dredge out and then having to go back in, we would incur significant extra costs, perhaps up to a million dollars. However, I found out something equally disturbing at this meeting. We had a representative of the Army Corps of Engineers, and I asked him if there were two projects, two Army Corps of Engineer projects competing for an allocation of funds, and one was on the ground working, and the other had to pull out and interrupt its procedures, which one would get the money? And he said, oh, undoubtedly the one that was on the ground. So, by, if we do not find the funds to continue the dredging, not only do we incur the extra costs to get the dredges back, but we may also jeopardize future federal funds in the process. So, I think this is something I expect we will get a report from Assistant City Manager Dave Kiff at the next meeting. I know he's been working with the other members, staff members in the stakeholder group to see if we can find some funds in case we do not get the federal funds we need to keep this going.
Okay. Councilmember Curry?
Two reports. The 1-1 Memorial Committee met yesterday. We are continuing to raise money for the Marines Memorial, which you'll see out front. We're going to probably close all fundraising for purposes of being recognized on the plaque by the 30th of March, so this is your last opportunity to get in your contributions to be part of this project, as we sort of push through to collect the last $10,000, $15,000 remaining on this project. And again, continue to hold Memorial Day weekend, which will be a great celebration in the city as we dedicate this monument with the 1-1 Marines who are back from Iraq for this great day for our city. Tomorrow, the Finance Committee will consider a very comprehensive study on all of the city's fees. This is done, it's consistent with Prop. 218 about fee recovery, to identify how much of the cost of services that we recover from fees, and this is all fees, everything from booking in the jails to Socrates teams to planning and building check fees to our fees at Oasis. There are some recommendations for some reductions, and there's some recommendations for some increases, and so we're going to have a very methodical process to consider those, to get stakeholder input before coming back to the council with a recommendation on where we need to go in order to update our fee schedule for the city and the policies that we'll want to follow to do that. So, I encourage those of you that have an interest in that to follow that process as it begins to get underway. Thank you.
Counselmember Webb?
I have none.
Counselor in hand?
Yes, I have a report on the Ad-Hoc Committee for Group Homes, which I am pleased to present.
Can we wait till Dolores gets back?
Well, it is videotaped, so I'm sure she'll be able to see my report. The Ad-Hoc Committee actually has been very diligent in pursuing its responsibilities on behalf of the full council with regard to the entire group homes issue. We meet at least weekly. We meet with city staff, including Dave Kiff and Robin, and outside council. And so, we're very active and very diligent about all of this. I'm pleased to report, very pleased to report, that the new ordinance that we passed actually became effective on February the 21st, and so, we're working very hard principally right now to make sure that we're in a position to prosecute that ordinance, you know, as it is necessary. We have put up on the website the new application for group home operators to use, to make application, to continue their work, their business actually, here in Newport Beach. Thanks to Dave Kiff, that was a lot of work. I know he had help from others on staff, and so, we appreciate that. We've also posted RFPs for hearing officers to hear these use permit proceedings, as well as additional planning staff to help support that process, as well as looking for additional code enforcement staff. We have not received any use permits, applications yet, but I am quite confident that we're going to be fully ready to move forward with those applications promptly and fast as they are received. Again, I'd like to extend my thanks to Dave and Robin and the rest of the city staff here for helping us move this process along very fast. We are interested in making sure that we complete our responsibilities with these use permits just as quickly as we can. Thanks.
Counselor Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Daigle?
Yes, Citizens Aviation Committee, I serve on that with the mayor and with Councilman Webb. We meet monthly at the library, and we also have citizens represented from each of the districts. And one of the items that we discussed is going to be on our agenda this evening, that's item 29, our Go Local program, so I'll wait to hear at that time for a report from the city manager. And then also appreciate the report on the watershed of the Back Bay, and certainly with the earmarks process, it's very challenging, we're at the whim of partisan politics and election-year politics, so I look forward to hearing more about any local solutions that might come up.
Thank you. I've got two committee reports. One is the Marina Park City Council Citizens Advisory Committee. There'll be a meeting in the council chambers, nine o'clock tomorrow morning. We'll be discussing the uses of the various facilities in the proposed Marina Park. The park's director has been having meetings with some of the stakeholders in the last month, and then also, we'll be talking about the timeline for further steps that are needed in the process. And then at three o'clock in the afternoon, we have, here also, a meeting of the General Plan Implementation Committee, and I think the major item on that agenda is going to be the eating and drinking establishment review, if I remember correctly. So, that'll be at three o'clock tomorrow afternoon. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report. Mr. Leepo.
Mayor and members of the city council, this past Thursday, the Planning Commission held two public hearings, two different items. One was the public hearing on entitlement requests for the proposed eight-unit condominium complex on Carnation at Ocean Boulevard in Corona del Mar. In the end, after much discussion, if you remember, this was a changed project after having gone to the city council, and the city council provided direction for protecting the bluff out there, the Planning Commission recommended to send the action on to city council. I think you'll be seeing that probably on March 25th. Also, there was a revocation hearing for the use permit for Fury Rock and Roll Sushi Lounge on Dolphin Striker Way. There was a lot of discussion on that in terms of the substantive matters as well as procedural issues. As we've indicated here, the Planning Commission chose to invoke the municipal code section that allows this matter to be referred to a hearing officer. We've set that up already and expect to have a hearing consistent with the Planning Commission direction underway before the 6th of March, and we'll report back to the Planning Commission on the status on March 6th.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Leepo? Okay, thank you, David. Any comment from the public on the Planning Commission report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next section of our agenda, which is current business. The first item is item number 28, City Council Direction to Staff Regarding the Annexation of the Santa Ana Country Club and South Mesa Drive Unincorporated Areas in Santa Ana Heights. I see a lot of folks out here, and I think most of you are here for this item. How many of you plan on speaking to this tonight? Okay, I'm going to make a suggestion to the council that we limit the public comments to three minutes that allow a representative of Santa Ana Country Club in the area of South Mesa each to have five minutes. Do we need to move that as a motion? No? Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Watkins, I'll allow you five minutes, and is there someone that's representing the area of South Mesa Drive?
Cal McLaughlin.
Cal? Oh, I didn't see you back there, Cal, okay. So, Mr. Watkins and Cal, you guys will each have five minutes, and everyone else, three minutes, but first, we'll have a report from our city manager for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're here tonight because in 2007, residents from the Santa Ana Country Club and also the area we call the South Mesa Drive submitted enough valid signatures to the Local Agency Formation Commission to have them consider an annexation of both the Country Club and the South Mesa Drive area to Newport Beach. That application is complete except for one increment that is required. It is an instrument that would basically be a contract between the county and the city as to how the property tax would be shared. It is a complicated process. The city has previously, in 1980, entered into an agreement with the county that we would be willing to split property tax 51% to 49%. Now, the application from the residents to LAFCO also would have a change of sphere of influence from Costa Mesa to Newport Beach. That would need to be done first before LAFCO could consider that the annexation to Newport Beach. A little background, though, of the area, east and west, Santa Ana Heights and the Country Club area has long been in the county of Orange. East Santa Ana Heights was in the city's sphere of influence, and it was annexed to the city in 2003. West Santa Ana Heights was in the sphere of influence of Costa Mesa. They allowed it to be released to Newport Beach, and that was just annexed this past January the 1st. In 2002, Costa Mesa tried to annex these two areas, since they were in Costa Mesa's sphere of influence. Over 90% of the residents petitioned out of that annexation, and therefore, it died. I think I have been able to identify four alternatives for council to consider tonight, and the recommendation on the staff report was, is the city council, or to direct the city manager to take no action to negotiate a property tax sharing agreement with the county, with the understanding that the application would remain incomplete and will be failed to be acted on by LAFCO before April, when the application would expire. Council could take that action. Council could just continue this item and not do anything, and after April, then the annexation would expire, so both of those actions would get you to the same place. The third one would be to ask the city manager to bring back a property tax sharing agreement for your consideration, because you think that annexation is a possibility. And the fourth one, I talked to LAFCO staff today and asked what would happen if we might ask for a continuation, and it was my response back from LAFCO staff, and this isn't from the commission, that they would take no action on this annexation until their May meeting, and in May, we could submit a letter to them asking for a six-month continuation of that, and that would probably be received favorable by the commission. There certainly is the possibility of city council wants to annex these two areas, that LAFCO could still say no. So, just because the city council would like to annex, if that's what you wanted to do, that doesn't mean an annexation would automatically happen, because LAFCO has to make legal findings that are found in state statute in terms that the city of Newport Beach could serve these two areas better than any other jurisdiction. So, I think that ends my staff report. I thought it was necessary to bring this to the city council, because the residents have been waiting and waiting to see what is going to happen with their application, and I thought we owed them that decision one way or the other, rather than just let the application die.
Counselor Rosansky?
Yeah, I just want to kind of follow up one moment, just at the end here. You know, I got on city council a little over four years ago, and this issue has been kind of knocking around here for four years. You know, everybody needs to remember that LAFCO came to us after Costa Mesa tried to annex this area and said, hey, why don't you take a shot at it? And although ultimately, we did put in our application for just West Santa Ana Heights, and we left out the Country Club and the other area of South Mesa, we did say at the time that if the residents and the Country Club went to LAFCO and put in their own application, that we would support the decision of LAFCO, whatever that was. And so, you know, these folks, you folks, have invested a lot of time and energy and money into this process, and I think it's time that we, as a city council, just make a decision, to go forward or not to go forward. Asking for a continuance from LAFCO for another six months just drags it out for another six months. So, you know, I think we need to make a decision, we need to make a decision tonight. These people, you know, there's no point in dragging them back in here in six months or four months when we want to listen to it again. They're all going to have their opportunity to make their case to us tonight, but I, for one, you know, I've followed this for a long time. I've negotiated with LAFCO over the West Santa Ana Heights annexation with Councilman Daigle and Councilman Webb. I sat with Paul Watkins, who I'm sure is going to speak as soon as we're done, and Cal McLaughlin as well, and they made credible arguments for bringing those two areas into our city. Half of the membership of the Country Club are Newport Beach residents, I mean, I think we owe them something as their representatives to at least just make a decision, one way or another. And so, you know, and I recognize that there are political implications here, and we have a letter that we received here, I don't know if you folks have seen it, from the mayor of Costa Mesa, the new mayor, Eric Beaver, basically saying, you know, it's a time for cooperation. But, you know, what I find kind of interesting is that they had no problem pushing LAFCO to try and change our sphere of influence and try to de-annex, actually, a piece of Newport Beach in order to get to that sphere of influence. And, you know, partnership and cooperation weren't the words that they were talking about at those meetings, so it's kind of a little bit, I don't know, you know? So, please don't applaud. It's not something to applaud. It's not something to applaud. I'm just saying that you folks deserve an answer, we need to get it off of our plate. It's really LAFCO's decision at the end of the day, and it's going to be your decision when you vote on it, assuming that LAFCO says to go forward with it. So, I say that we move on it today. I'm going to make a motion that we do enter into a tax sharing agreement with the county, and just let's see where it goes.
Steve, could you clarify, because I want to be sure I heard you correctly, that the council had, has made a previous commitment?
I believe in the transmittal letter that we sent with our application for West Santa Ana Heights, we said that although we're not including those two areas, the Country Club and the area of South Mesa, in our application, that if those areas did want to pursue the, do you have a copy of it, Paul? Thank you. If they do want to pursue it, that we would, can I use my exact, or our exact language here? It says, "While our annexation application does not contain either the area of South Mesa Drive or the Santa Ana Country Club, the city council has directed me," and this is a letter from Homer, "to notify you that the council is well aware of stronger desire on the part of many residents and our property owners in those unincorporated areas to be part of our annexation. Should LAFCO find that a change in the sphere of influence and a reorganization for these areas is appropriate and something that serves the goals of the residents, property owners, and LAFCO, and the city of Newport Beach would be willing to work with LAFCO in accomplishing that reorganization." So, I think this letter is dated March 3rd, 2006, God, it's two years ago, March 3rd, 2006. So, again, for the last two years, these people have been laboring, trying to accomplish exactly what we said we would cooperate with if they got that far, and so I think we just need to go in that direction.
I'd like to piggyback also on something that you said, because I know it has been raised, this concern about working well with the city of Costa Mesa, but that the issues that have been raised, it seems to me, are issues that it would be in Costa Mesa's self-interest in most of them to work with us, even if we had a disagreement on this, and I think that we could give them anything they wanted, and I doubt that they'd start standing up for the 19th Street Bridge.
Bite your tongue. Bite your tongue.
But certainly the traffic issue... But certainly, the traffic issues and working with them on banning ranch, that's to their benefit as well. So, I think that there may be some issues that we could continue to work on.
Ed, Councilman Curry?
This is one of those issues, as are most issues, actually. Where Councilman Rozansky and I are in complete agreement. I mean, this is a procedural matter to allow there to be a complete application so that LAFCO can have an up or down vote on Santa Ana Heights. That's what it is. It's a fairly perfunctory agreement. It's consistent with our past actions. I appreciate the concerns about Costa Mesa, but frankly, they took a run on banning ranch. I'm not, you know, they were highly obstructionist on the West Santa Ana Heights annexation. And at the end of the day, it's about self-determination. People have the right to petition their government to be in the city they want to be in, in the kind of structure and government procedure that we've designed to do it, which is in front of LAFCO. And by us not approving this, we're simply creating a structural barrier that prevents LAFCO from considering this in a fair up-and-down vote that is highly unfair to the property owners at the Country Club and to the homeowners in Santa Ana Heights, South of Mesa. So, I will be supporting this motion to support the tax-sharing agreement.
How about a second?
We need a second on it. Thank you. Any other comments this time? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Watkins, you want to speak first?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And if I could ask for maybe just 30 seconds, I'll wiggle room, I may make five minutes.
Sure. We're easy here tonight.
Nice. Well, I understand Homer's desire to take the high road with Costa Mesa. We believe there are just a couple of points to consider on behalf of the many Newport Beach residents and voters who support and will continue to support you. In our view, it is fair and right that after 10 years, and after the expenditure of hundreds of man-hours and $38,000 worth of out-of-pocket expenses, that the club and the thousand residents in the South of Mesa Drive property should be able to present their case to LAFCO. In our view, it is fair and right, and it is evidence of your good faith to honor the implicit promise in the letter that Steve read from, of March 3, 2006, to Joyce Croft Wade at LAFCO. The second part of what Steve read is really the critical part. It says, "Should LAFCO find," this is a critical point, "if they make a finding that a change in the sphere of influence and a reorganization for those areas is appropriate and something that serves the goals of the residents, property owners, and LAFCO, then the city of Newport Beach would be willing to work with LAFCO in accomplishing that reorganization," end of quotes. Perhaps through inadvertence, the city may take a position tonight that would block LAFCO from making a finding that a change in the sphere of influence and a reorganization is appropriate. Plain and simple, how can LAFCO make or not make such a finding if tonight you kill 10 years of our effort, $38,000 of expense, and hundreds of man-hours of our invested effort? So, we're asking the city to sign a simple, standard-form tax-sharing agreement, the same standard-form tax-sharing agreement that, it's my understanding, the city and the county have entered into unchanged for 28 years. The act of signing the tax-sharing agreement is not a declaration of war against Costa Mesa, and certainly does not rise to the level of Costa Mesa's recent decision to challenge your rights to banning ranch. A little bit off the subject, but when Kennedy endorsed Obama a couple of weeks ago, is it any of our feeling that somehow Senator Clinton and Kennedy will not be able to work together ever again in the Senate of the United States? I think not. Costa Mesa will have ample opportunity to oppose our annexation and sphere change at LAFCO later this spring or summer. You have an opportunity tonight to do the right thing, the fair thing, and the thing that was implicitly promised in Homer's letter of March 3, 2006. That is, to allow LAFCO to make a finding, or not make a finding, favorable to annexation. Please allow the process to proceed by entering into the standard-form tax-sharing agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Oh, it was under five. Cal, if you can hang on just a second. I'm going to bring it back to the council, because I kind of sensed something up here. Maybe we can short-circuit the need for everyone to get up and speak. And with the council's pleasure, I'd like to maybe call for a straw vote on this issue to see where we all might be on it. And I'll just start off, and I'll just say, I was initially leaning towards the city manager's recommendation, and I actually encouraged him to contact LAFCO regarding a continuation. But after seeing particularly this letter here tonight and hearing some of the discussion, I'm moved to support the motion by Councilman Rozansky, and so that would be my straw vote. So, I'll start with you, Councilman Gardner. Councilman Curry?
Aye.
Councilman Hen?
I support the motion.
Councilman Rozansky?
I support the motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
Yes.
Okay, there you have it, six to one. So, unless you really feel compelled to get up here and say something, I think you can see how the final vote will go. So, with that, does anyone else feel the need to address the city council?
A good salesman knows when the wind flows.
Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. Please vote.
With Councilmember Webb voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. If you could exit quietly, please. We have other business to attend to. Please exit quietly. Is that a futile attempt or what? Okay, the next item on our agenda under current business is the city council approval of a joint Go Local funding application submittal with Costa Mesa to the Orange County Transportation Authority for a study related to the movement of air passengers within Orange County. A report from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In 2006, the OCTA board came up with a program called Go Local, and with the goal of making the metro link system more accessible to all Orange County residents, and also increase the system ridership. And to that effect, the board said that they would offer $1,000, excuse me, $100,000 Go Local grants to each of the 34 cities in the county to come up with their own proposals as to how to improve and increase ridership on the metro link system. I have been working with the Costa Mesa city manager, because we think there is an opportunity to look at air passengers in Orange County, how they relate to John Wayne Airport, where they come from, what the demographics are and the geographic distribution of those passengers. Ultimately, we want to get those passengers outside the county to other airports. But in order to start, we really need the basic information. In order to meet the Go Local program requirements, that movement of passengers needs to take place in the county. So, we are looking at using John Wayne Airport as the entrance and exit to that metro link program in doing this study. And we have met with OCTA staff on a couple of occasions, and we think we have crafted a scope of work that certainly meets the Go Local requirements. But we think that this is an important first step and can be funded through the Go Local program, of finding out where the John Wayne air passengers come from, even outside the county. We will find that out, and then we'll see how well it fits in terms of moving people, first of all, to John Wayne, but then eventually, outside the county. Peggy Ducey is the consultant who has been working with Alan Roder and myself in putting this application together. She's in the audience if you have any questions about the scope. But there are four recommendations that, in my staff report, that are associated with this issue. One is approve the cooperative agreement with OCTA for the Go Local program. That means we will adhere to the Go Local requirements. Two is authorize the city manager and city attorney to accept minor revisions that may be requested by OCTA staff and council. And council today did suggest some very minor revisions, our council did. Three is authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the final agreement. And four, direct staff to schedule a joint city council meeting with the city of Costa Mesa, following the execution of the cooperative agreement with OCTA. That was something that Costa Mesa is interested in, and we're talking about building bridges. We think that this is a good project in order to try and do that with. Without any further discussion, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Or, like I said, Peggy Ducey is in the audience, and she would head the study team in order to accomplish this Go Local grant requirement. And the turnaround, the final study, needs to be done before the middle of the summer. So, there is a quick turnaround on this.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
Yes, thank you, Homer, for putting this together and meeting with Costa Mesa. Appreciate it. And I know that this enjoys support from both the airport working group and airfare community groups that are active on airport issues. So, I would make the motion to move it as recommended by staff with that addition today.
Second.
Any other questions, staff discussion? Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back for a vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item on our agenda is item S.30. It's the city council's position on the Orange County Sanitation District's proposed rate increase.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I asked that this item be put on the agenda because I felt that it's something that Newport Beach needs to be aware of. It's a fairly substantial rate increase. But one of the things, along with the percentages, is it's a relatively small amount of money per individual, per month, per year. But the benefits that accrue from this are extremely significant to the city of Newport Beach. The sanitation district has a sewer outfall that goes out into the ocean a mile or so. And at the present time, portions of that effluent are only a primary treatment. And by 2012, there's a mandate that that treatment has to be a full secondary treatment now. You have to, let me give some of my figures here. You need to recognize that the Orange County Sanitation District is the third-largest wastewater facility treater west of the Mississippi. And this means that we're serving about 2.5 million people as far as providing the treatment of their disposals. And one of the things that has occurred is that the sanitation district has put together a $2.5 billion capital improvement program. And in order to fund that, to provide the, really, there's about three things that really benefit Newport. But the first is the water quality improvement in the ocean. Second is that it does help fund the remainder of the groundwater replenishment project, which will end up guaranteeing for us a more stable water source in the future. In other words, we will be able to draw more water from the groundwater basin than we would if the replenishment program were not there. And thirdly, there's about a $10 million element of this capital improvement program on odor control. Those of you that are in the West Newport area occasionally get some whiffs from the treatment facility that's over in Huntington Beach. And this is one of the things that, as a director on the board, that I've really pushed hard to make sure that those odor improvements are in the area. But at any rate, the chart that I handed out is a list of the proposed increases that we're being asked to make over the next five-year period. They end up being roughly 10% per year. If you boil that down to how much does it cost you as a single-family resident in Newport Beach, it costs you roughly $1.93 a month additional increase above and beyond what you pay now, which is $15 a month for your treatment. And it will go up at the end of five years to where you're paying $24 a month, or your increase per month ends up being roughly $9 increase. If you look at the second chart, it's a comparison of some of the rates that the various different treatment facilities within the Southern California have. And you'll notice that the sanitation district is roughly the third lowest, or, well, third lowest, in the fees that they charge. And part of what we will be doing is, we get a little bit closer to the average, but we still will be significantly lower than most of the other agencies. So, I would like to recommend that we adopt a position of approving the, not approving, but a position that supports the increase of the rates so that our representative before the sanitation district board can vote, knowing that our full council was in favor of this.
I would certainly support that. We had a big public outreach, a big public reaction to get OCSD to go to secondary treatment. We have to realize that we want this sort of thing, we have to pay for it.
I'll second your motion. And as a resident of the Far West Newport who occasionally gets that whiff, I think this is something we definitely need to have, and I will be supporting the vote.
Councilman Hen?
I just had a question. I think it's great that OCSD is third lowest. I'm wondering why, do you have any idea why IRWD and LA County are lower yet? Don?
It's, actually, Councilmember Daigle and I met with their finance director, and we didn't get the full explanation as far as the LA was concerned. He said that they are, have a different rate structure and facilities that they manage than these are. And as far as IRWD is concerned, a portion of what IRWD produces comes to the sanitation district. And I can't answer why they are lower, but they do not have to treat nearly as much sewage as the other one does, and they don't have a sewer outfall.
Councilman Webb, aren't they maybe a little subsidized by property tax?
Oh, yeah, they have definitely property tax subventions. I guess you want one?
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
Yes, certainly is the alternate. I'll fulfill the duty of casting a vote tomorrow, it is. And Don is going to be in Georgia. And I happened to mention to Don that they had this governor of Georgia, Zell Miller. And what he had given out was every woman that had a newborn baby, CD that was Increase Your Baby's Brain Power Through Classical Music. And Don pointed out to me that there was an even better governor of Georgia, the one that gave everyone a free ax handle. So, kind of remember that. But certainly, the benefits that you pointed out, what's that? What's that? The secondary treatment and replenishment and the odor control are all really, really good benefits.
Any other comments? Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back for a vote. Got to move fast, Dick.
Is there even a, they don't even have an idea what they're going to spend this on, do they?
They very definitely have an idea what they're going to spend it on. There's a $2.5 million capital improvement program that establishes almost every nickel of what the money goes for. They've gone through the program with a fine-tooth comb and actually reduced it by about $400 million to get this rate increase down to where it is, only 10% per year. But yes, they know exactly where the money's going to be spent.
Because my understanding is everything that we've talked about up here has already been funded.
No, that's not true.
In other words, it hasn't been funded, it's just been built already.
No, no. That which is under construction is funded. This goes to help pay for some of the debt payment. One of the things the district has tried to do in their programs is they want to make sure that the rates that they collect pay for, at least sure that the rates that they collect pay for at least fifty percent of the improvements in operations that need to be done. And then the remainder will be funded through various different debt issues.
I would certainly suggest that a protest be made about the fluoridation. We're ruining that underground water supply and it's already showing up.
Dave, Dick, I think that if you go to the Orange County Water District and you look at the various different studies, the fluoridation is removed from the water that's going into the basin.
The fluoridation?
The fluoridation is removed from the water that is in the replenishment program.
You mean when it's going back to the underground?
Yes.
That's, that's not exactly true, or we wouldn't have to be adding all the calcium in there in order to bring it out.
You said fluoridation.
The fluoridation, that's right.
The water that's being produced is so pure, it's essentially distilled water. And it will, they have had to add the additional minerals in to cut down on the, the activity that it has in the piping systems. But it doesn't have anything to do with fluoridation.
The piping system is due to acid attack. And in talking to them, Don, they point-blank said they didn't know. But indeed, the only thing that can get through the reverse osmosis is the fluoride. And the fluoride goes right through his H F. If the water makes it, so does it. And that's more and more known.
Thank you, Dick. Okay, any other comments? Okay, bring it back for a vote.
Motion carries.
Boy, I'll tell you, I am. Beat my, my over by a lot. Okay, the last item on our agenda is supplemental item thirty-one. This is the city council building committee's recommendation to the city council regarding the future location of a city hall and its city hall design process. And I'll give that report from the building committee. We have three actions before us this evening. One is to approve the council building committee's recommendation, which consists of council members Rozansky, Hen and myself, that we place the new city hall on the city-owned site adjacent to the central library as prescribed in the, in the recent ballot initiative, measure B, that was approved by the voters. The second recommendation is that we approve the city council building committee's recommended city hall design process, which is attached. And I believe there's a revised version that didn't make the city manager's printing deadline in time that's been passed out. And I think there's copies in the back. Just has some slight technical revisions to it. And then the third, the third item is to adopt a resolution establishing the city hall design committee. On the first recommended action, I feel, as does the building committee, that it's important that we take a formal action by the city council to designate the site for city hall as a, as an action of the city council that reflects the decision of the voters that was made on February the fifth. And as far as the city hall design process goes, it's a twelve-step process that's been outlined. I think there's, there's some flexibility, pardon me? There's some flexibility in this process as we move on. But basically, as the building committee has recommended, it's, the project is going to be that we're going to design the city hall building and a master plan for the approximately twenty acres that run from the Corona Del Mar Plaza to the O C T A transportation facility. It would include the library site, Newport Center Park, and city hall site, and the three-acre open space parcel north of San Miguel that was recently offered for dedication in the Newport Center North Development Agreement. The second point is the city council ad hoc building committee will continue to oversee the project as before. The meetings will be noticed and open to the, to the public as appropriate. And there will be reports to the city council.
I think that the where appropriate was deleted in the new version, wasn't it?
It is, I'm sorry, it is. And that there'll be reports at each city council meeting on the activities of the building committee. The third point was that the building committee will discuss and recommend to the city council the general design parameters, which are the basic overall factors affecting the sites, such as validating the space requirements and the needs assessment that's already been completed for the previous city hall design, how to deal with the view plane ordinance, placement of the city hall building on the park site, whether to use the natural park area of the previous park design as a traditional park area, dealing with access and circulation, LEED certification, and other similar public policy issues that will be designed parameters for the architect. And the fourth point is that the city hall, a city hall design committee of four licensed architects and one licensed landscape architect, which would be called the city hall design committee, will be created to oversee and conduct a design competition for the project. Each committee member should be a resident of the city, shall be a resident of the city of Newport Beach, and should have at least five years' experience. And ideally, each member should have experience in large-scale commercial and/or public facility design. In order to, point number five, in order to allow the city hall design committee members to focus on design issues, our committee recommended that we have an experienced non-voting chairman to be appointed to chair the city hall design committee meetings. It was our feeling, and we couldn't get verification until over the weekend because he was out of town, that former planning commission chairman Larry Tucker be appointed to fulfill that role. He indicated to me that he was willing to accept that role. I don't think we can make that appointment tonight, but it would be officially done at the time we appoint the full committee. I think Mr. Tucker has shown his skills, both as chairman of the planning commission multiple times, and also he chaired our facilities site selection committee. I'm not sure exactly what the title of that committee was a couple of years ago. So I think his skills have been proven and well-known to, to all of us. And again, all city hall design committee meetings will be noticed and open to the public. Minutes will be posted on the city's website. We're trying to make this as, as open a process as we can and, and also have a, have an expedient but a prudent process as we move through this. The sixth point is that the city public information manager shall advertise by all appropriate means, which would include contacting American Institute of Architects, a call for interested local architects and landscape architects to submit their applications for appointment to the committee by five P M. March the fourth. It isn't in here, but I would suggest that the building committee be given some latitude on that in the event that we don't get a sufficient number of applications by that time, give us some latitude to bring that back to the council. I think we would rather see it moved sooner than slower, so hopefully we can get a sufficient number of applications by March the fourth. The building committee would then interview the applicants and recommend appointments to the city council on March the eleventh, if we get enough applications in by March the fourth. Otherwise, it would be a subsequent meeting. And then the city hall design committee, which is the new committee, will meet as needed from March eleventh to roughly May thirtieth. Again, I think we need to have some flexibility in these dates and let the city hall design committee work its way through this process. I think that we have suggested these gates as, these dates as goals that we'd like to achieve as opposed to absolute, absolute dates. But this committee would then meet during that period of time to, one, issue a request for qualifications to world-class architects interested in participating in a design competition for the project. And I presume they would discuss amongst themselves whether we search worldwide, nationwide, Orange County. I think that should be a decision left up to that committee. In consultation with the building committee, the city hall design committee would then develop recommendations for a more detailed set of design parameters for the selected architect. These would be more detailed than the general design parameters referred to in the third point. And together, they would, they would provide the direction that the selected architects would have in preparing their designs to, to be submitted. The city hall design committee would review the qualifications of those architects that respond to the request for qualifications. And then the last point would be they would select three to four firms and recommend those firms to the city council. Again, that's, that's a range, and I think that we would leave that up to this architects' committee to actually determine the final number of firms to recommend to us. Then on roughly June the tenth, the city council would award a stipend to each of the firms recommended by the city hall design committee. We've suggested twenty-five thousand dollars here. The architects committee may suggest that that be a different amount, that that, for the basis for discussion to start with, that seemed to be an appropriate amount. Then the city council would review and finalize at a publicly noticed hearing the general and detailed design parameters to use in, in preparing these alternative design concepts from the different architects. Then we would have roughly the period from June the tenth to September twelfth for the selected architects to prepare their design concepts. All submittals would be in by September the twelfth is a, is a goal, five o'clock. And then the city hall design committee would begin a review of the concepts at publicly noticed meetings. And then our goal would be to have the committee recommend a architect design concept to the city council by roughly November the eleventh. And the final point then, that the council, if this all comes about within those time parameters, the council would be in a position to award a design contract to an architect on December ninth. And I think we would note here that the final design contract would not only include a design for city hall, but a park design. And there would be a landscape architect working with the architect to complete that. So that's the recommendation of the building committee, and we hope that the rest of the council concurs in our recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Gardner.
My commendations to your committee, I think you really nailed this. I think the design process is excellent, two parts of it, aside from the LEED certification. Thank you very much. The fact that you call for a master plan of the area, so we're looking at it as a whole, I think that's a wonderful first step. And the fact that we are really reaching out so that we will have an exciting design and not the same old thing that we might see, I think that is very exciting to contemplate. And I'm really looking forward to some of the results we'll get.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilman Hen.
Yeah, and the, and the changes that were made from the originally distributed draft were really intended to emphasize and highlight and make very clear that there will be ample opportunity for public input into this process at each of the junctures at which key decisions are to be made, so that we get as much public input as we can. And hopefully, in a way that doesn't necessarily impede the process. So I think that was really important, too.
Councilman Rozansky.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. You know, as a supporter, obviously, of measure B, and something I, you know, a year ago, I called Park Plus and it morphed into City Hall in the Park. I just wanted, you know, my hat's off to you and Mike, and I'm assuming, hopefully, the rest of the council tonight, that we are moving forward expeditiously on this, that we are kind of putting this city hall location debate behind us, moving forward. We, you know, the project's been kind of derailed for a year. But I know that you have an ambitious schedule for moving this project forward. Obviously, I think we all have recognized that we needed to do something about city hall. I think that the direction that we're moving in now is going to get us there quickly with, as Nancy pointed out, with a great design. We've got a good program here. I think we do have the talent in town to staff this committee and, and to, to guide us. One thing I might add, maybe an item thirteen, it may not even need to be added tonight, but something we would think about is, the duty of the committee kind of ends when we award the contract to the architect, as I kind of understand it, how we've laid it out. We didn't really discuss this, I don't think, in our building committee meetings. But I envision either a role for this committee or maybe another committee to be appointed at that time to actually help us work with the architect and to keep that expertise there. Because, you know, let's face it, I'm not an architect. And I remember looking at the designs that we got for this, you know, the city hall here and, you know, it's like, okay, well, let's add this on, or let's add that on. And it was like, you know, we were designing the proverbial camel here. And I think, in a sense, no one was happy with the end result. And I'd like to hopefully keep those architectural creative juices flowing throughout this entire process, not just end once we've, we've identified an architect. So that's something to consider. As far as the makeup of the committee, I do see an architect out in the audience here tonight, who's sitting back there, Bill Ficker. And I would hope that he put in an application to be on this committee, because I think a lot of where we are today is owed to him. So with that, I'll make a motion to adopt your, the recommendations of staff.
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Mayor for Tim DeGel.
Mr. Mayor, just a question, if people wanted to apply to the city hall design committee, how would they go about doing that? And when will be taking applications?
We'll be taking applications tomorrow and via standard board and commission application form from the city clerk's office. Again, the qualifications are, the key qualifications, licensed architect or landscape architect, key qualifications and a resident of the city.
And five years' experience.
Five years' experience.
And preferably with larger projects.
Large-scale projects and public buildings. Councilman Webb.
In, in restricting that, in effect, you may have eliminated some of the best architects that would, might want to compete for this job, too, because there might be some local architects that felt that they would like to be considered.
Well, they're going to have to make a choice if they want to be.
As far as necessarily putting in the requirement related to the, having experience in large buildings or commercial buildings, I think that you may want to maybe consider some architects that aren't necessarily, that are more residential architects, but still have the architectural experience to get into that.
Well, if you notice, we didn't make that a requirement per se, it was a goal.
Right, I understand. Make sure as long as that doesn't become a firm requirement.
Any other comments? Councilman Curry.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I would commend you and the building committee for, I think, putting together in very short order a very workable and rapid strategy to move forward quickly. And while this was a divisive and difficult campaign, I want it to be known, I'm certainly committed to following the direction of the voters and moving forward as it looks like we are as a united council in implementing the voters' direction. Now, when listening to the voters, I think it's imperative that we listen carefully because the voters were offered some very specific parameters during the campaign. Voters were told, for example, that city hall would cost forty point six million dollars, that it would require three acres, that a ten-acre park could and would be provided, and that parking would be at about nineteen thousand dollars, seventeen, nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars a space and above-ground structure. Voters were further told city hall would create no traffic problems around Newport Center. We were also told that great expenses was, was made to ensure the accuracy of these, these claims. And because these claims were important to the voters in making their decision, I believe we as a city council should seek to ensure that these assertions are met and that there's accountability as we develop the city hall. And I'm pleased, Mr. Mayor, to see that transparency and accountability has been built into this process as we go forward so that we can continue to do this. So I am very proud and pleased to support this motion, enjoying with us in a united way now as we move forward on the city hall issue.
Okay, any other comments? Open this up to the public. Anybody wish to comment on this item? Please step forward.
Those that are last, those that are last shall be first.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach and, okay, all of you, and I do agree with councilmembers, Councilmember Curry's comments that he just made, and I think those are extremely important. And that was one of the reasons why I talked about the fact that the traffic around, around this site needs to be improved and that just because you're going to put a couple of cameras up there, you know, doesn't mean that's going to happen, and that has to happen. And also the fact that that's what people were told, and thank you so much, Councilmember Curry, for reminding everybody, and I'm sure that you will continue to do that. I won't have to. Thank you. Could you please read number two again, because I gave my copy to somebody else, because you only had three of them. So I would appreciate if you could read that again.
The city council ad hoc building committee will continue to oversee the project as before. The key design issues will be approved by the city council, and these meetings will be noticed and open to the public. There will also be reports to the city council at each city council meeting on the activities of the building committee.
Okay, so now, when you do those, are you going to like do them at a study session instead of like at night, or you haven't thought that far? Because sometimes I go to these, you know, like committee meetings, and then the information that's presented to the council is not the same information that was presented at committee meetings. And I would think that this is something that, you know, is going to take that to the next level, right? And you're going to make sure that everyone gets all this. And you're going to make sure that everyone gets all the same information? And maybe you have to do that at a study session? And can I ask why you had them open to the public as deemed appropriate by the committee and then decided to change that? I'm just curious, you could answer that at the end.
Well, I'll answer it right now. The intent was always to have the key design issues, that those would be at public meetings, and that was always the intent. It was just a matter of choice of wording here.
Okay, thank you.
The words "where appropriate" seem to have cast a little bit of doubt on that, so we took them out.
Okay, that's fine, because I don't, yeah, okay, thank you. And does the ad hoc committee meeting, ad hoc committee, become part of this City Hall Design Committee?
No.
Okay, and then, how do you sunset the ad hoc Building Committee? I'm into always closing these kinds of meetings. How do you, when does that sunset? Or you don't know yet when it's built, after it's built? Is it going to go on for a couple of years, or?
I'm not familiar with the resolution, so I don't know what the sunset provisions are in there.
Well, it's the Building Committee, and not only for City Hall, but for any city buildings.
So it's an ongoing committee, like the Finance Committee? So there is no sunset.
Okay, so, all right, so then, that'll just, so then, when you change the committee, or like, we'll know when you go on to the next project, even though it's an ad hoc committee, correct?
When we run out of money, that's when we're going to disband.
No, it isn't even funny, but I know we want to joke about it, and I'm joking about it, but, so, we'll know when this portion of this ad building, the ad hoc Building Committee ends, and when you start another one on another project, right?
When we have the City Hall dedication, you'll know the Building Committee's work on City Hall is done.
And I think that you should start to think about what you're going to do with this site, because a lot of people out there are very nervous, and I'm hoping that you can do something to keep it a park for this area, because we have plenty of beaches, but no parks, and so that's another issue for another day. Thank you.
Yvonne, did you put your finger on the sunset provisions for this?
Are we referring to the Building Ad-Hoc Committee?
Yes.
It is, the term of that committee is through the duration of the project.
Project being the building of City Hall.
What's the purpose of the committee?
To work with Griffin Holdings on the identification and resolution of planning issues, to provide oversight on project planning costs, to regularly report back to the City Council on the City Hall campus planning process, to ensure all stakeholders have opportunity to provide input during the schematic design process, and to make recommendations to the City Council on proposed schematic design on or before March 2004, and I have a feeling that's right.
That's not the right one.
We may want to take that, that resolution.
But I...
Wasn't there another one, though?
Yeah, there is, and I don't recollect, though, that it was actually going to continue for all purposes under the, I think it was just for the City Hall project, Ed, which is why I was asking her to...
I'll find it in a second.
Okay.
Okay, well, while she's doing that, I'll just say that I'm really excited about this process. I think that it will provide an opportunity to really get some really creative approaches to how we can have the best City Hall possible on this site, and how we can have a park that integrates and works with not only, not only a City Hall structure, but the library, deal with some circulation issues in that area, and so, I think it'll be an exciting process, and I really can't wait to see what the selected architects, what they end up presenting to us in their design concepts.
I want to commend you for your self-discipline, because I know how you love to plan things, and not be in the design.
Your time is up, Ed. I see the red light flashing. Why don't we get the next speaker up here while she's looking for that?
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Well, Karen does.
Well, Karen's coming up here. That is the last one that was adopted, it has not been amended.
Well, we should put agendas up, then. Thank you, Dolores.
Mayor, council members, my name is Karen Tringali from Corona Del Mar, and I'll try to take some of the burden off of Councilman Curry and Ms. Oding by also helping to remind people some of the promises that were made in this campaign. Newport Beach residents have approved the City Hall relocation as a result of many important promises that were made throughout the campaign. A great deal of money was spent to ensure that those promises were communicated throughout the city through a variety of media. City Council is now charged with implementing this relocation in the spirit of those promises made by notable residents and council members themselves. Newport Beach residents who voted on this measure, either for or against, now look to our council and its Appointed Building Committee for accountability to deliver on those promises, and I'm just going to enumerate a couple of the ones that seem to be most important and that resonated in much of the media that surrounded this campaign. 10-acre park and open space, millions of dollars of savings over other locations, traffic mitigation, open space enhancement and preserving, stops council from wasting money, building City Hall next to the library, savings of at least $13 million, public and neighborhood views protected. There are even some promised, even some suggested alternatives for the current City Hall site to be redeveloped for public uses and services and not for private development. As residents, we are all accountable to support this vote, and the residents will hold City Council and the Building Committee accountable to implement those promises. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Remember to watch the little box there, Dick.
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I'd like to just remind everybody that this was left relatively open, and I was on a tour of the upper site there, just above where City Hall is going, where the three swales are, and it was pointed out that for about 50 grand apiece, you could get those taken off the map and put into a fund that we could use somewhere else environmentally, and then we could have a park that would really be beautiful up above there. You can improve traffic by many means. One of the things that was pointed out by others who have looked at this traffic, including the Irvine Company, is Faragot could go through to MacArthur. This would very much improve traffic and lower our traffic problems dramatically. These things are all open in the present plan, and I hope the architects are allowed to consider these things. This would greatly enhance our ability to use the property to solve the traffic problems, to make this a much better site than it presently is. So we should look just like the others did, and with the same degree, Mr. Curry, I'd like to point out, that the veracity of both sides might be considered in this, so we get it down and make it worthwhile. But we should look at what would best serve as City Hall. It's very important to get this to be right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the City Council for any further discussion. Councilman Webb?
Yes, I'd like to compliment the Building Committee and Ed. I know that a lot of these ideas came right straight out of your mouth, but they were definitely something that I think is needed in trying to put together the overall program, and I particularly compliment you on the concept of putting together a master plan for the entire 13 acres, because I think that many times in the past, we have tended to look at single projects rather than looking at what our goals needed to be as far as planning the entire area, so that I think that this will give us an excellent start, and I hope and pray that we can meet the schedule that you've, the tough schedule that you've put down, because I'd sure like to have City Hall almost done when I have to leave the City Council in 2010.
Okay, any other comments? Call for the vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Before we get on to that, in the limited research I did here, I did not find anything other than what I read to you on the Building Committee, so that should be brought back.
Okay, we'll discuss it at the Building Committee and bring back the recommendation. Thank you.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motion for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned.